तुम सकना को
नमस्कार बेंगलुरु
गुड आफ्नून लेडीज एंड जेंटीमेंट और शुड आई से गुड आफ्नून तू डी फ्यूचर चॉटर्ड अकाउंटेंट्स ऑफ डी कंट्री
वेलकम बैक तू डी सीएस स्टूडेंट्स मेगा कॉन्फ्रेंस 2023 ध्वनि डी वॉइस ऑफ फ्यूचर चॉटर्ड अकाउंटेंट्स ध्वनि यार सावधिपत मूरक के तमिल लरिगू मत्तों में स्वागत सो स्वागत
आई एम अपेक्षा पाई
एंड आई एम हर्षाय चल एंड वी आर एक्सट्रीमली थ्रिल तू बी योर होस्ट फॉर दिस सेशन
लेट डी वॉइस ऑफ अस डी फ्यूचर चॉटर्ड अकाउंटेंट्स इको थ्रू दिस वॉल्स आज वी क्रिएट मेमोरीज तू चेरिश फॉरएवर कैन एनीबॉडी रिकॉल डी नेम ऑफ डी कॉन्फ्रेंस
इतनी सम्बडी इस अवेक देयर
डी नेम ऑफ डी कॉन्फ्रेंस इस ध्वनि नाउ वी रिक्वेस्ट ऑल ऑफ यू तू श्याउथ डी वर्ड ध्वनि आस लाउड डी पॉसिबल ऑन डी काउंट ऑफ थ्री
ये लो जोरा खेल बेको ऑन डी काउंट ऑफ थ्री टू वन ध्वनि
वंडरफुल वंस मोर ऑन डी काउंट ऑफ थ्री टू वन ध्वनि डस एनीबॉडी नो व्हाय अन कॉन्फ्रेंस इस नेम ध्वनि ध्वनि मींस साउंड इन सांसकृत
भारतदा आर्थिकतया धिड़पड़ी सुवंत हा आवंदु सहिए ध्वनि त्रिवरण द्वज दिन रंगना साला पड़ेदा सीए लोगोना हिरिमयन्ना हेच्ची सुवल्ली पात्र राग बेकादा निम मेलर ध्वनि
बेलुगिन जावत हक्की गल इंचर अवेद ध्वनि
ध्वनि इस डी क्यूरेटेड प्लेलिस्ट ऑफ अरिजित सिंस नेक्स्ट कॉन्सर्ट
ध्वनि इस डी इरिटेटिंग बस ऑफ बेंगलुरु ट्रैफिक डेट वी ऑल हद तू कॉन्कर इन ऑर्डर तू बी हेयर
नाविल्लरू ईश्ता पट्टू माइ चेली बिट्टू कुनिवंत हा टपांगुची स्टेप्स ध्वनि
बट ध्वनि इस अलसो डी साउंडट्रैक ऑफ डी माइंस एंड इंटिमेट डायलॉग डेट विस्पर्स डी प्रॉमिस डेट वन डे वन फाइन डे यू 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 एंड आई ईच ऑफ अस सिटिंग हेयर विल फुलफिल डी लाइफलॉन ड्रीम तू फाइनली गेट डी टाइटल
चॉटर्ड अकाउंटेंट इट इस दिस मोटिवेशनल एंथम डेट प्रोपेल्स फॉरवर्ड बाय डी वॉइस ऑफ डी ओन डिटरमिनेशन एंड हार्ड वर्क
आज वी मूव फ्रॉम लंच प्रेट तू डी नेक्स्ट सेशन
विथ आर बेलीस फिल
मेबी
हार्ट सैटिस्फाई
होपफुली
माइंस रिज्यूविनेटेड
यप
रिमेंबर डेट ईच स्पीकर ईच पार्टिसिपेंट एंड ईच वन ऑफ यू सिटिंग हेयर
आर नॉट म्यूर अटेंडीज बट एक्टिव पार्टिसिपेंट्स इन दिस मेगा इवेंट सो पार्ट योरसेल्स ऑन डी बैक एंड गिव अन ह्यूज राउंड ऑफ अप्लास तू योरसेल्स वी विल नाउ मूव तू डी फर्स्ट स्पेशल सेशन ऑफ डी आफ्टनून दिस विल बी अन मोटिवेशनल सेशन बाय सीएस सिद्धात्पाई एन इंट्रोडक्शन तू डी सेशन विल बी हु आर वी वी आर सीए एस्पिरेंट्स वी आर डी फ्यूचर पायोनेयर्स ऑफ डी फाइनेंशियल वर्ल्ड
दिस नेक्स्ट सेशन इस डी मोटिवेशनल सेशन ऑन डी ब्रॉड कॉन्सेप्ट ऑफ फाइनेंस एंड बियोंड आज स्टूडेंट्स ऑफ चॉटर्ड अकाउंटेंसी वी हैव डी फाइनेंशियल अक्यूमन एंड यूनिक सेट ऑफ स्किल्स स्किल्स डेट एक्सटेंड बियोंड डी बैलेंस शीट एंड ऑडिट
वी हैव डी एबिलिटी तू नॉट जस्ट अंडरस्टैंड डी लैंग्वेज एंड इंटरनल फैब्रिक ऑफ बिजनेसेस बट इवन हैव डी पावर तू रीडेफाइन एंड रीशेप इट
फॉर दिस सेशन वी हैव डी प्रिविलेज ऑफ वेलकमिंग अन डिस्टिंग्विस्ट स्पीकर अन सीएफओ हु इस नॉट जस्ट इन डी वर्ल्ड ऑफ फाइनेंस बट हैव मास्टर्ड इट लेडीज एंड जेंटलमेंट लेट्स गिव अन वार्म वेलकम तू सीएस सिद्धात्पाई आर एस्टीमेंट स्पीकर फॉर दिस मोटिवेशनल सेशन
वी रिक्वेस्ट सीए पंपरना सर तू एस्कोट सीए सिद्धात्पाई ऑन तू डी डायस गिव अन ह्यूज राउंड ऑफ अप्लास फॉर सीए सिद्धात्पाई
गिव अन ह्यूज राउंड ऑफ अप्लास तू सीए सिद्धात्पाई सर
वी रिक्वेस्ट सीए पंपरना सर एंड सीए सिद्धात्पाई सर तू प्लीज टेक योर सीट्स दिस सेशन इस चेयर बाय सीए पंपरना सर लेडीज एंड जेंटलमेंट वी आर प्लीज तू इंट्रोड्यूस सीए सिद्धात्पाई अन डिस्टिंग्विस्ट प्रोफेशनल हु सर्व्स आस डी फाउंडिंग पार्टनर सीएफओ एंड एसटी ऑफिसर आत थ्री वन फोर कैपिटल एंड ओरली स्टेज वेंचर कैपिटल फर्म बेस्ड इन बेंगलुरु सीए सिद्धात्पाई सर इस अन प्रोमिनेंट फिगर इन डी आईएफ इंडस्ट्री ही इस डी यंगेस्ट एक्सीक्यूटिव काउंसिल मेंबर ऑफ डी इंडियन वेंचर कैपिटल असोसिएशन एंड डी टू टाइम को चेयर ऑफ रेगुलेटरी काउंसिल कमिटी प्लेयिंग अन पिविटल रोल इन शेपिंग डी इंडस्ट्री पॉलिसीज विथ डी पोर्टफोलियो ऑफ ओवर 80 इनवेस्टमेंट्स एंड मैनेजिंग मोर देन 4200 करोड़ रुपीस ऑफ कमिटेड कैपिटल सीए सिद्धात्पाई एक्सेंप्लिफाइज एक्सीलेंस इन डी रेलम ऑफ वेंचर कैपिटल एंड फाइनेंस
विथाउट फर्डर अडू वी रिक्वेस्ट सीए सिद्धात्पाई सर तू एड्रेस डी स्टूडेंट्स
गिव अन ह्यूज राउंड ऑफ अप्लास फॉर सीए सिद्धात्पाई
यू लॉट डी डू ओके सो आई विल टेल यू डी चेंज परफेक्ट सो वे गुड आफ्नून तू ऑल डी स्टूडेंट्स अभी हेयर आई नो आई नो इट इस आत्या डॉन्टिंग चैलेंज तू एंड अप आश्ली कंप्लीटिंग योर लंच विदेन 15-20 मिनट्स बट आई प्रॉमिस यू दिस दिस पर्टिकुलर दिस पर्टिकुलर सेशन विल आश्ली एंड अप वेटिंग योर एपिटाइट विथ अगर तू व्हाट इंडिया इस अचीव आज ऑफ नौ व्हाट डी फ्यूचर होल्स फॉर इंडिया व्हाट्स डी रोल डी स्टार्टअप्स एंड अप आश्ली प्लेइंग इन डी इनोवेशन इकोनॉमी आज वेल आस डी रोल डेट चार अकाउंटेंट्स कैन आश्ली एंड अप डूइंग तू आश्ली एंड अप शेपिंग डी फ्यूचर ऑफ डी ऑफ डी अगस्त नेशन इटसेल्फ फॉर डेट मैटर सो तू अंडरस्टैंड डी एंटायर डी एंटायर स्टार्टअप इकोसिस्टम डी कंट्री आश्ली बिगन इन डी ईयर 2011 आज ऑफ नौ बट आश्ली डिड रिच इट्स इंफ्लेक्शन पॉइंट ड्यूरिंग कोविड इटसेल्फ सो आई विल जस्ट स्टार्ट ऑफ बाय सेइंग डेट व्हाट कोविड आत्या डून आत्या पर्टिकुलर पॉइंट इन टाइम आत्या एक्सपोज्ड डी फ्रेजिलिटी ऑफ डी एंटायर ग्लोबल फाइनेंशियल सिस्टम डेट वास डेयर एंड हो एंड हो इनकमेंट ऑल ऑफ अस वर हर पर डी इनकमेंट नीड फॉर ऑल ऑफ अस तू आश्ली रिलायर ऑन फिजिकल सप्लाई चेंज इटसेल्फ फॉर डेट मैटर व्हेन कोविड आत्या डिड कम डाउन एंड डी लॉक डाउन्स एंड एवरीथिंग आत्या बिगन मोर लेस डी एंटायर वर्ल्ड जस्ट हैव वन रेस्पोंस फॉर डेट फॉर डेट एंटायर पीस नेक्स्ट विच वास तू आश्ली एंड अप आश्ली प्रिंटिंग मणि नेक्स्ट ड्यूरिंग डी एंटायर कोर्स ऑफ दिस सॉरी ड्यूरिंग डी एंटायर कोर्स फॉर दिस फॉर डेट मैटर डी वर्ल्ड आत्या प्रिंटेड 16 ट्रिलियन डॉलर्स विदेन डी स्पैन ऑफ ए फ्यू मंथ्स इटसेल्फ तू पुट डेट इन डी कॉन्टेक्स डी उसे आई आत्या क्रिएटेड इंडिया इस एंटायर जीडीपी इन डी स्पैन डी स्पैन ऑफ वन पार्लिमेंटरी सेशन इंडिया क्रिएटेड पाकिस्तान इस एंटायर जीडीपी डी स्पैन ऑफ वन सेशन इटसेल्फ फॉर डेट मैटर एंड डी एंटायर फ्लड ऑफ लिक्विडिटी डेट एंड अप आश्ली कमिंग तू डी ग्लोबल फाइनेंशियल सिस्टम स्टोली आत्या सारी चेंजिंग यील्स सारी चेंजिंग ग्रोथ एंड ड्यू तू दिस पर्टिकुलर चेयर्स आज वेल वी आत्या सीन डेट डेट वास वन सेक्टर इन पर्टिकुलर डेट गैल्वनाइज डी लार्जेस्ट अमाउंट ऑफ कैपिटल अक्रॉस डी एंटायर वर्ल्ड इटसेल्फ नेक्स्ट दिस वास आश्ली टेक इफ यू डिड आश्ली प्लॉट ऑफ डी स्टॉक प्राइजेस ऑफ एनी ऑफ डी टेक्नोलॉजी कंपनीज कंपैर्ट तू एनी ऑफ डी पीर्स फॉर डेट मैटर अगेंस्ट अगेंस्ट डी टाइमलैंड ऑफ कोविड यू आत्या सीन एक्स्पॉनेंशियल ग्रोथ इन अन लार्ज नंबर ऑफ डी टेक्नोलॉजी स्टॉक्स एंड टेक्नोलॉजी कंपनीज आज यू सारी गैल्वनाइजिंग अन कैपिटल फ्रॉम इन्वेस्टर्स एंड सारी ग्रोइंग दिस आर डी कंपनीज डेट हेल्प डस नैविगेट कोविड हेल्प डस आश्ली नैविगेट डी एंटायर डिजिटल वर्ल्ड आज वी नो इट इटसेल्फ फॉर डेट मैटर डी टेक मोनोप्लीज हैव आत्या इमर्ज फ्रॉम कोविड 19 वी न्यूज़ दिस वर वेरी लार्ज कंपनीज दिस वर स्ट्रांग कंपनीज बट नोबडी आत्या रिलाइज डेट डी अमाउंट ऑफ कैपिटल डेट एंड अप आश्ली गेटिंग थ्रू डेट ग्रो तू 1.7 ट्रिलियन डॉलर्स ड्यूरिंग डेट एंटायर कोर्स ऑफ 2020 इटसेल्फ एंड अन लार्ज अमाउंट ऑफ डीज गेन्स माइंड यू विच इस लार्जर देन कंट्रीज अक्रॉस डी वर्ल्ड वास मोनोप्लाइज बाय डीज बाय डीज सिक्स कंपनीज इटसेल्फ विच अपॉर्टी नोन आस डी फैंक कंपनीज अक्रॉस डी वर्ल्ड व्हाट वी एंड तू तू डी वर्ल्ड व्हाट डी वर्ल्ड एंड अप सीन आज ऑफ नौ एंड व्हाट वी सफरिंग थ्रू आज वेल इस आत्या एक केशप रिकवरी सो नेम बिकॉज़ ऑफ डी काइंड ऑफ शेप इट आत्या इंटरटेक्स विद सिमिलर तू डी लेटर के व्हेयर वी हद सीन सर्टेन सेक्टर्स डेट वर प्रेडोमिनेंटली डोमिनेटेड बाय टेक्नोलॉजी एंड अप आश्ली आउटपेसिंग आउटपेसिंग डी रिकवरी कंपैर्ट तू डी रेसर्स सेक्टर इटसेल्फ आज ऑफ नौ इवन इन डी ईयर 2023 आज इंटरेस्ट अब आत्या ड्रिवन अप बिकॉज़ डी लिक्विडिटी इंजेक्टेड इन वी हैव आत्या सीन टेक्नोलॉजी कंपनीज डोमिनेट डी एंटायर लांसकेप एंड डी माइंड स्पेस फॉर एवरीवन वर्सेस डी नंबर ऑफ डी ट्रेडिशनल बिजनेसेस हैव एंड अप आश्ली फॉलिंग बाय डी वेट साइड इटसेल्फ नेक्स्ट परफेक्ट डिजिटाइजेशन आस आत्या चेंज डी एंटायर वर्ल्ड आज वी नो इट आज वी नो इट फॉर डेट मैटर ओर डी 8 बिलियन पीपल डेट वी हैव डेट आर मोर देन 57% देम डेट आत्या कनेक्टेड इटसेल्फ 5.4 बिलियन बिलियन मोबाइल कनेक्शन आत्या एक्जिस्ट 5.16 बिलियन पीपल वर आत्या ऑपरेटिंग ऑन डी इंटरनेट आज वेल उसिंग अन वैराइटी ऑफ ऐप्स एंड डेट आत्या चेंज डी वे सोशल डिस्कोर्स हैपन एंड आई फैरी सर्टेन अन नंबर ऑफ यू ऑन योर वह वर आत्या ऑन योर फोन्स राइट नौ आज वेल आर एंड अप एंड अप आत्या कंट्रिब्यूटिंग तू डीज लार्ज नंबर्स एंड डी टाइम डेट आत्या स्पेंड ऑनलाइन सो डी ओरली मूवर्स डी होल रोड ऑफ टेक्नोलॉजी इस आश्ली कैन बी एक्सप्लेन तू डी कॉन्सेप्ट ऑफ अन फ्लाईवील अन फ्लाईवील अन फ्लाईवील इस डी सिंपल मेकैनिकल इंस्ट्रूमेंट डेट एंड अप आश्ली गैदरिंग एंड होल्डिंग ऑन तू पार एंड डी मोमेंट मोमेंटमेंटम इजेस डी फ्लाईवील एंड अप गेटिंग एक्टिवेटेड एंड कांस्टेट डेलिवरिंग पार एंड कंपोनिंग ओवर टाइम वी हैव आत्या सीन डी ओरली मूवर्स ऑफ टेक्नोलॉजी फॉर डेट मैटर एंड अप आश्ली डोमिनेटिंग डी एंटायर लिस्ट स्पेस एंड यू नोटिस डेट सम डीज ओरली मूवर्स आर हाउसडोर नेम सिस्टर्स माइक्रोसॉफ्ट सिस्टर्स अप्पल एक्सेटर डेट आर मैनेज तू आत्या कंपोन्ड बर्कशायर हथवेज विच वन ऑफ डी लार्जेस्ट इनवेस्टमेंट फर्म्स इन डी एंटायर वर्ल्ड क्लोज तू हाफ डी आर्सेस राइट नौ वर आश्ली आत्या इन डी स्टॉक्स ऑफ अप्पल इटसेल्फ एंड डी ओनली आद आदिड अप्पल तू डी पोर्टफोलियो इन डी इन डी मिडिल ऑफ डी लास्ट डेकेड वी आत्या सीन डी काइंड ऑफ ग्रोथ एंड डी काइंड ऑफ डोमिनेंस डेट डीज पर्टिकुलर कंपनीज हैव एंड डी वे डेट आत्या फंडामेंटली अल्टर्ड एवरीवन लाइफ आज वेल सो डी टेक इस आत्या ईटन डी मेजॉरिटी ऑफ डी लीडर बोर्ड्स डेट आत्या डू एक्जिस्ट अक्रॉस डी एंटायर वर्ल्ड आज वेल क्योंकि वी लुक अन डी बोस प्रॉफिटेबल कंपनीज इन डी वर्ल्ड बारिंग बारिंग डी एनर्जी कंपनीज विच आत्या हद अन विन फॉल ड्यू तू विच आत्या अन विन फॉल ड्यूरिंग कोविड डी मेजॉरिटी ऑफ डेम आर आत्या टेक्नोलॉजी कंपनीज आज ऑफ नौ डी पर्पस डी पर्पस ऑफ टेक्नोलॉजी व्हेन इट कम्स तू फाइनेंस फॉर डेट मैटर डी एबिलिटी तू आत्या फ्लैटिन फिक्स कॉस अक्रॉस डी एंटायर बोर्ड सो डेट एवरी इक्रीमेंटल डॉलर ऑफ रेवेन्यू डायरेक्टली गोस तू डी बॉटन लाइन इटसेल्फ दिस आर वेरी कैपिटल एफिशिएंट बिजनेसेस डेट कुड ओनली हैपन बिकॉज़ डी एबिलिटी फॉर टेक्नोलॉजी तू रिड्यूस डी नीड फॉर ह्यूमन इंटरवेंशन एंड डी नीड फॉर फोर्थ इनवेस्टमेंट इन डीज पर्टिकुलर एरियाज आज वेल एंड ड्यूरिंग डी एंटायर टेक्नोलॉजी वर्ल्ड डेट डेयर आस वेल डी उस इस वन ऑफ डी लार्जेस्ट कंट्रीज इन डी वर्ल्ड डेट एंड अप आत्या रनिंग डी एंटायर वर्ल्ड्स क्लाउड इफ एनी ऑफ यू वर तू ओपन योर फोन्स एंड अन नंबर ऑफ यू आई डू सी आर आश्ली ऑन योर फोन्स आज वी स्पीक आज वी स्पीक आज ऑफ नौ मोस्ट डी ऐप्स डेट यू हैव फॉर डेट मैटर आत्या डोमिनेटेड बाय योर लास्ट एक जो योर लार्ज एक्टाइंस लार्जेस्ट एंटरटेनमेंट ऐप आइट यूट्यूब और नेटफ्लिक्स इस अमेरिकन मोस्ट डी योर ईमेल मोस्ट डी योर मैसेजिंग ऑन इंस्टाग्राम और व्हाट्सएप इस अलसो अमेरिकन मोस्ट ऑफ एनी ऑफ डी मींस ऑफ कम्युनिकेशन और मींस ऑफ पेमेंट बी गूगल पे एक्सेटर ऑल दिस आर प्राइमरी अमेरिकन कंट्रीज आर डेयर एंड आज डेटा बिकम्स डी न्यू ऑयल डेटा बिकम्स न्यू सनशाइन डेटा बिकम्स व्हाट्स गोइंग तू फंडामेंटली ट्रेन आर्टिफिशल इंटेलिजेंस फॉर डेट मैटर डी बिगेस्ट प्रॉक्सी फॉर डेटा आस आत्या क्लाउड सेंटर्स एंड वी हैव सीन डी उस आत्या डोमिनेट डी नंबर ऑफ डेटा सेंटर्स डेट आत्या एक्जिस्ट अक्रॉस डी एंटायर वर्ल्ड इटसेल्फ ऑल ऑफ डेटा नो मैटर व्हाट यू डू एवरी सिंगल प्राइवेट मैसेज एवरी सिंगल इमोजी डेट यू सेंट आत्या नौ रेस इन डी सर्वर सम्बर आर ऑन डी वर्ल्ड सो डी बिगेस्ट क्वेश्चन डेट पीपल इन दिस रूम नीड तू आस किस इफ सम्मान आत्या मिसयूस यू डी डेटा वेयर डू सीक लिकल रिकोर्स इफ यू गो तू डी कोर्स ऑफ डी न्यूटन एस्टेट्स ऑफ अमेरिका यू आर नॉन रेसिडेंट अलियन यू हैव नो राइट्स अवर डेयर वास सोवर इफ यू गो तू डी कोर्स ऑफ इंडिया डेट हैव नो जोरिस्टिक्शन ओवर डीज फॉरेन सेंटर्स इटसेल्फ सो वी हैव आत्या सीन पॉलिटी आज वेल आस डी जुडिशल प्रोसेस एंड अप नीड तू फंडामेंटली रिफॉर्म इटसेल्फ तू अडैप्ट डी काइंड ऑफ डिजिटल वर्ल्ड डेट वी आर सीन आज ऑफ नौ एंड इवन सम डी लार्जेस्ट जायंस इन डी वर्ल्ड आज वेल डी इयू फॉर डेट मैटर विच वन वन ऑफ डी लार्जेस्ट इकोनॉमिक ब्लॉक्स इन डी वर्ल्ड इस आत्या एन आजिंग डिजिटल कॉलिनी डेट आर ओनली टू लार्ज टेक्नोलॉजी जायंस तू आत्या कम ऑफ डी होल ऑफ यूरोप वन इस एसएप डी अदर स्पॉटफाई एंड बोथ डेम फॉर डेट मैटर आत्या हैव लार्जर ऑप ऑपरेशन इन डी उस डेट डू इन डी रेस ऑफ डी वर्ल्ड इन फैक्ट डी रोल ऑफ डी इयू राइट नौ इस तू सॉरी बिकम डी रेगुलेटर फॉर डी वर्ल्ड आत्या आत्या गाडिंग एक्सेस तू इस लार्ज मार्केट एंड फोर्सिंग डी रेस डी टेक कंपनीज तू आत्या एंड अप डांसिंग तू डेट टून आज डेट गो अबाउट नेक्स्ट सो दिस इस डी न्यू नॉर्मल डेट यू एंड अप आश्ली सीन वेयर एवरी एस्पेक्ट ऑफ योर लाइफ एवरी एस्पेक्ट ऑफ योर इंटरेक्शन विथ डी फिजिकल एंड डिजिटल वर्ल्ड फॉर डेट मैटर इस फंडामेंटली अंडरपिन्ड बाय डीज लार्ज टेक जायंस यू लुक अन अल्फेबेट आज वेल विच इस प्रीवियसली गूगल डेट नॉट जस्ट इन सर्च डेट नॉट जस्ट इन यूट्यूब डेट नॉट जस्ट इन वीडियो डेट नॉट जस्ट इन आई आई आज वेल विद डी लॉन्च अन जेमिनाई एंड बाड डेट आर विदेन एवरीथिंग डेट यू डू फ्रॉम फाइबर फ्रॉम लॉन्चिटिविटी फ्रॉम फास्ट ट्रैकिंग इन डी राइट Amazon हैस आत्या बिल्ड इटसेल्फ आस डी वर्ल्ड्स बुकस्टोर तू बिकम डी एवरीथिंग स्टोर फॉर एवरीवन फॉर डेट मैटर एंड एएवस इस आत्या फंडामेंटली पारिंग डी एंटायर क्लाउड इनफार्स्ट्रक्चर एंड वेयर एवरी स्टार्टअप एंड अप आश्ली बिल्डिंग इन इटसेल्फ सो यू लुक अन डी कोऑर्डिनेटेड कैप्चर ऑफ योर एंटायर डिजिटल टाइम एंड योर डिजिटल माइंस दिस कंपनीज हैव दिस कंपनीज हैव मार्केट शेयर्स वर आत्या अनहर्ड ऑफ एंड एवरी रेगुलेटरी कमिशन योर कंपटीशन कमिशन डी एफटीसी एंड एवरीवन एल्स नो वन्स बीन एबिल तू स्टॉप दिस मैसिव राइज ऑफ टेक्नोलॉजी तू एंड अप हैपनिंग अन 71% मार्केट शेयर ऑफ डी मोबाइल ऑपरेटिंग सिस्टम क्लोज तू 90% ऑफ ऑल इंटरनेट सर्चेस फॉर डेट मैटर इफ यू लुक अन डिस दिस आर डी कंपनीज डेट एंड अप आत्या डोमिनेटिंग डी एंटायर वर्ल्ड डेट आर आत्या स्ट्रांगर देन गवर्नमेंट्स अक्रॉस डी एंटायर वर्ल्ड इटसेल्फ एंड हैव फार लार्जर फार लार्जर बजट्स देन मोस्ट कॉम्परबल कंट्रीज अलसो
Is a software, a software or computer science degree. It's easy for you to end up actually doing through no code solutions. The need for you in terms of connectivity for that matter or actually creating or competing with the cloud giants is something that you can end up actually renting for for mere cents on the entire terabyte itself. We have seen next generation quantum computing, next generation computing actually come about. And we have seen the rise of quantum computing as well. I think the role of quantum computing is something that I don't think many people actually internalize. The entire world's privacy actually runs, actually runs on an algorithm known as R S A algorithm, named after the three founders of it itself. This entire algorithm is actually contingent on the multiplication of two primes, a primary key and a secondary key for that matter. It actually takes a regular computer over a thousand years to end up actually breaking any of this encryption. It takes a quantum computer mere hours to end up actually doing that. So much so that there are governments and bad actors across the world who are downloading terabytes and terabytes of encrypted information as of now, because they know that when these quantum computers come up, they can break every one of those particular encryption codes and get access to all, to all, to all the world's secrets within one space itself. This is the world that we are actually inhabiting right now. This is the world we're actually coming in, which leads us to a fundamental premise that technology is now actually the lattice of human evolution. What I mean by that is it's no longer now contingent on being the smartest person in the room, no longer contingent on being the most physically fit. It's a person who understands technology and the person who can use technology is going to be the only person who will be successful in the world as we end up actually going through. And indeed, if you actually look at most of the large companies across the world as well, A M B N B is now actually using neural networks to actually decide which are the areas to actually end up investing in. In fact, one of the most popular vacation spots in the world, which is Cancun in Mexico, was actually found by a consulting firm using artificial intelligence to decide which is the convergence of factors that people like proximity to an airport, warm sunny beaches, having, having unfettered, having good infrastructures and unfettered access, where actually seeing new domains and new dominions and new jurisdictions get built purely because of the application of artificial intelligence itself. Next. Indeed, if you look at Spotify also for that matter, which everyone ends up actually using, Spotify is actually generating more views and more playlists in every single music, uh, music company or music label in the world. In fact, now they've actually started creating artificial songs that are actually created by, actually made by A I artists. They have actually circumvented the need for human creativity to end up actually coming there. And the thing is, most people don't actually realize that the song they're actually listening to has been fully and exclusively created by a computer over there itself. And this is leaves them close to 500 million active users where they end up actually using their services also. Next. Indeed, if you look at Foxconn as well, even though manufacturing is supposed to solve joblessness across the world, the world's largest factories now don't have a single light in them. There is no need for human intervention within because all those, all those factories are completely robotic. China has already done this. Hero in India has already done this with regard to two wheelers. So we are actually seeing technology circumvent the need for human intervention as well as, as well as human application during the course. Next. If you look at Adidas as well, which is a shoe company, has also turned innovative. They now no longer need sweatshops in China and Vietnam or anywhere else to manufacture their shoes. They can actually three dip in their shoes live and actually end up delivering it to you within a fraction of the time. And with artificial intelligence now coming and actually designing these particular shoes, the number of permutations and combinations for fashion that we're seeing is unbelievable. Sheen, which is one of the largest fashion retailers, fast fashion retailers in the world, actually has maintained its inventory for less than forty days. It only creates hundred to two hundred of these particular designs and is now actually reducing its reliance on human beings to end up creating those designs itself. The just-in-time process has gotten so efficient, it can actually gauge and estimate what future demand is going to be and what they're going to like, end up actually delivering according to those itself. Next, if you look at even Boston Dynamics and the lines of this, robots for that matter, even physical tasks such as moving goods, lifting up boxes, moving all of this, they've been dedicated robots that can end up actually handling this, which have already moved to warehouses as of now, which are allowing country, companies like Amazon, companies like Walmart, companies like Flipkart, to end up actually shipping billions and billions of goods physically within the span of two days itself. None of this could happen with human intervention. All of this can only happen through technology. Next. Indeed, if you look at Raytheon, everyone's seen the movie Iron Man. Everyone thought that we'll ever see an Iron Man in our generation. These are created. Raytheon is a large U S arms manufacturer which has actually created a super suit and an exoskeleton for soldiers, which ends up actually magnifying their human power, which allows them to actually run, actually leap buildings within the span of a mile. Always seen the videos on WhatsApp or people that are actually flying right now and actually managing this. This is reality. This is what's actually happening across the rest of the world. Next. Even if you look at, the greatest thing of science fiction is actually implanted chips. One of Elon Musk's company Neuralink is actually doing that. We now no longer need a physical device to end up interacting. Your iris actually becomes your identity. You can actually think and a door will actually open. You can actually, you can actually, you can actually complete payments and complete transactions just with the blink of an eye itself, just by actually thinking. This is already in field trials. It's already going to human trials right now. It is already happening for that matter. And even the brain itself, which is supposedly one of the most complicated systems ever heard of in mankind, has now actually been artificially replicated within a span of a chip, within a span of a chip itself. And these small microchips can actually be implanted into your brain, allowing you this level of control. I think when it comes to exams and everything for that matter, some of this can end up actually outcompeting everything. Indeed, even education institutions have no idea how to end up actually competing or fighting against this sort of technology. Next. And if you look at it even from the human perspective also, it is now possible for you to end up, the way you end up actually creating your pizza on a Domino's or an app, you can end up actually creating your own baby in a, in a test tube itself. You can make sure the person, the kid is not going to be autistic. The kid actually has a hair color that you end up wanting. You want blue eyes. You want it to be six foot two. You want it to be fair. All this can actually end up happening through gene editing. And mind you, there, there are companies across the world for a few, for a few thousand dollars who can end up actually doing this and actually putting it out there. And we have no regulation to end up preventing this from happening itself. Next. And coming to India as of now, so a large amount of these companies have actually been outside. We've seen the kind of stuff that ends up happening. But India is not actually far behind for any of these particular things. In fact, India, India has actually become one of the largest theater of tech-driven value capture. And what we've seen happen in the U S, what we've seen happen in China is something that's happening in India as well. Next. For this, so to understand where India is as of now is very important to contrast where India actually was. We achieved independence in the year nineteen forty seven, but we achieved economic liberalization only in the year nineteen ninety one. And since nineteen ninety one for that matter, if you actually were to contrast it, India has actually grown in dollar terms during this twenty-two-year period at a C H G R of eight point two four, eight point two four percent. The only country to end up growing larger than us was actually China during a thirty-year period. There is no other country in the entire world that has uplifted as many people out of poverty to end up actually generating this. The software industry in India ends up exporting two hundred billion dollars of software yearly. This is more than the amount of oil that Saudi Arabia ends up actually exporting in an entire year. Human intellectual capital has actually helped India maintain its balance of payments and helped India actually become what it is as of now. If you look at the savings rate that we end up actually having as well, it's about twenty-two percent, one of the highest in the entire world. If you look at the, if you look at our gross domestic investment, which still so end up increasing, it's actually twenty-two point five percent. We can finance the largest investments coming into our country through our own savings itself for that particular matter. And as a, as our share in the entire global exports ends up increasing, we will only end up becoming far more competitive because of India's deep, deep investments into technology and how startups have actually ended up evangelizing this. Even though we may look poor on a per capita income basis, there are one point four billion of us in this entire country. Anything ends up actually looking small over there. But the rate of change that we have actually seen is unparalling the entire world for a democracy to end up pulling this. China, of course, was, it's one, one country, one party, one rule, one mandate, one mind. But India, with all our diversity for that matter, it still managed to pull off one of the largest economic miracles the world has actually seen. Next. And indeed, India is going to be the next trillion-dollar economy in a very, very short span of time. If you look at the largest, the countries, the countries growing across the world, the quickest way, India is the largest economy of this particular size that is actually growing at eight point two percent. Within, for the year twenty twenty-two to the year twenty twenty-eight, we will actually become the third largest economy in the world. We beat, we beat our former colonial masters Britain in the, in the year twenty twenty-one itself. We will end up actually beating China by the end of twenty-four. We will actually end up beating Germany as well to become number three by the end, by the end of twenty twenty, by the end of about twenty twenty-eight itself. This is the kind of rate of change that we are actually seeing and the rate of change that all of you will end up actually continuing to sustain. All the people, I remember the previous speaker, when we were doing the, the last session as well, was saying that this is the future that you C A students are actually going to get into. The people in the past, people, people of my generation and generation before me have actually given over this entire gift to the rest of you to end up actually, to end up actually navigating and controlling. This is a large legacy that we end up actually bequeathing to you and it's, it's a mantle that you must actually end up taking up as you end up scaling up as well. Next. And one of India's greatest assets is not just some mind, but our actual population. The average age of the entire country is actually twenty-eight point eight seven years. If you contrast that with Japan, you contrast that with China, these are countries that are actually aging. In fact, China for that matter is going to become older before it ends up becoming richer for that. The one child, the one-family, one-child policy has fundamentally altered the entire population dynamics of that entire country, actually leading them to the middle-income trap. The only small country, emerging country to break out of middle-income cap, middle-income trap has actually been South Korea. India can very well actually become the next. And this particular young population, next. And we will continue to have a young population for that matter, despite China actually peaking then. India's population will only actually end up peaking within the year about twenty thirty-five for that matter. We still have a good fifteen-odd years, twelve-odd years to end up actually capitalizing upon our population to make sure we educate our people, make sure they become far more productive and go. Our emerging middle class as well is fundamentally altering the way people actually manage. Pakistan for that matter was actually looking for a one point two billion dollar loan from I M F. When Mahindra actually released his new Scorpio X U V or something, it actually, it actually, it actually got close to three billion dollars of orders from Indian residents, pre-orders in the span of a day. India could have single-handedly bailed out Pakistan and India and Pakistan were actually spoken about in the same breath merely thirty years ago. This is the amount of change that India has actually done in the last thirty years itself. I've looked at India as well and there is reason to be proud of this country. We are the only country in the world where the prime minister on a global forum actually speaks about the need for personal hygiene, sanitation and a toilet. And indeed, they have actually delivered upon it. We've seen electrification reach almost hundred percent of all our villages itself. We've seen Aysman Barad come up in terms of healthcare. We've seen mobile penetration increase. If you go onto YouTube, any of the popular channels, India has fundamentally altered the way the world actually ends up actually viewing any of its content. The most popular YouTube channel in the world is actually T series, which is actually Indian. We've seen Indians fundamentally rewrite how we end up working there. India penetration were one of the largest in the world, just behind China itself. In terms of roads also for that matter, we end up actually delivering kilometers and kilometers about roads, increasing connectivity also. Even when it comes to, even when it comes to education rate as well, India is slowly actually educating its entire population. The biggest, one of the biggest mistakes that Nehru actually made, that he didn't actually concentrate on women's education. As you look at the room as of now, when even I C I, which has done pioneering work, the majority of the students coming in are actually women, who are fundamentally altering the entire workforce as we end up actually going there itself. When it comes to water, there's now actually clean water that's been given to a number of people. We've already achieved the need for food security compared to the rest of the world for that matter. In fact, when India actually catches exports of food, the world actually goes hungry. And even the sixties and seventies, India was actually reliant on, on, on food imports to end up actually feeding its entire population. Next. And if you look at digitization is actually at the heart of almost every single change that has actually happened across the entire world itself. We have six hundred and ninety-two million, million internet users, one point one billion in the mobile connections and more than four hundred sixty-seven million people who are actually on social media, activating, navigating, speaking, interacting and actually just enacting commerce itself for that matter. If you look at the internet growth trajectory as well, India has the lowest cost of data across the entire world. It's actually zero point two dollars per G B of data. Every second person in India actually has internet connectivity right of now. We were actually the country that didn't have two G. We left for our two G, three G to actually go straight to four G and then you look at all your phones, almost everyone has a five G connection as of now. The five G rollout across the U S is still happening in bits and pockets, whereas most of the large metros in us, most of the larger states already have this kind of connectivity itself. And fourteen point six G B of mobile internet data is used by an Indian on a daily basis. The numbers actually from twenty twenty, the numbers actually gone up to seventy-nine G B of data itself. And they're using that data for interaction, using that data for commerce, for using that data to end up actually driving, driving economic growth. And if you look at India compared to the rest of the emerging markets as well, this is a very important slide. There is no one else who can end up actually comparing. We beat them especially on daily time spent on media for that matter, which I'm sure a number of you will be actively contributing to these stats as well. We have actually seen, we have seen India actually beat the rest of the, rest of the world. We now work on for nine percent of all the global app downloads as well. And we end up spending far more time, doing far more interactions than any other youth across the rest of the world. Next. And the consumer leap for that matter is actually released. It's unfortunate, but a large amount of this, the time you end up actually spending has actually not been on Indian companies. It's actually been on foreign companies like YouTube, Amazon, et cetera, and then next to them. Next. And indeed, if you start looking at how tech is actually permeated the rest of the world, e-commerce for that matter has actually gone from being a curiosity to being something that people actually can't live, live without. If you looked at your phones seven years ago versus your phones as of now, the majority of the apps that you use didn't actually exist at that point in time. And if those apps go down currently, we will have no idea how to end up actually living. And indeed, e-commerce, the e-commerce in India is actually only second to China for that matter. We will actually end up beating China during that entire space itself. Next. And it's not just an urban India phenomenon. Even people who look at startups, technology, et cetera, in terms of urban India, the biggest market is actually out there in Bharat. The biggest market is in a tier two, tier three, tier four for that matter, because technology fundamentally does not believe in geography. It actually transcends it. And the proof is actually there in the numbers that are actually coming over there itself. Next. And even B two B commerce for that matter, be it the government, e-marketplace and the like itself, we are actually seeing that kind of penetration end up actually increasing. Even though it was just zero point five percent as of now, we are actually seeing a lot more procurement. Procurement actually end up moving online there by collapsing supply chains, allowing people to aggregate, allowing people greater bargaining power when it comes to it. Next. And this startup ecosystem, it's all this technology, everything that's happened, it's fundamentally driven by this and this will become the catalyst for India to become a ten-trillion-dollar economy by the year twenty thirty itself. Even when the prime minister spoke about India being a five-trillion-dollar economy, he put a challenge for the startup ecosystem to contribute twenty percent of that, one trillion from the new age economy itself. Next. And this is the Indian startup ecosystem in a nutshell. We have actually over one lakh B P I T registered startups as of now, the third largest in the entire world. Calvin has four hundred fifty billion dollars of value creation, boasting of hundred and eight unicorns, which is just the third in the entire world. Next. And our startups at the glance also for that matter still actually monopolized. Bangalore is actually the start, the silicon valley of the entire India. We are the, we are the city that is actually powering the entire technology revolution across. No matter what others, no matter what Delhi may say, Mumbai may say, Hyderabad may say for that matter, any startup that even comes up in these areas has to have a presence in Bangalore in order for them to actually end up succeeding. And we've actually seen that during COVID, even last year for that matter in the year twenty twenty-two, more than fifty percent of all the F T I into the analysis space actually, actually came into Bangalore itself. The largest startup exit in the country actually happened from a Bangalore-based company, Flipkart. The largest M and A deal and hospitals also for that matter happened to Manipal, Manipal hospitals in Bangalore itself. Bangalore constitutes seventy-two percent of India's entire G D P and yet all of us are still struggling with the same kind of problems such as lack of connectivity. There are bus problems and a number of these infrastructure problems, which hopefully technology can end up actually solving over time itself. Next. On that, and indeed, I spoke about the flywheel and how it ends up ramping up. This is what the flywheel can actually do. In nineteen eighty-nine is when we saw the startup, when we saw the technology companies and software product companies actually come about. And those technology companies who actually cut their teeth on the best-in-world practices became the incubation centers for a large amount of tech talent that's coming in, split off from that, started their own businesses, new enterprises, ended up actually scaling up itself. Next. And like I said, India's, India's software exports is more than the U S exports automobiles, more than Singapore exports electronic components, Switzerland pharma, France transport, U K chemicals, Brigitte Food, Saudi Arabia food. We are, our tech, our intangibles are actually the greatest export that we have. And if you look at the valley as well, a third of all the founders in Silicon Valley are actually of Indian origin for that matter. Forty-five percent of all the immigrants who've started companies, unicorns in the U S actually do come from India, are actually Indian origin. The largest tech giants, your Google, your Google, if you look at Google, if you look at, if you look at this one, Microsoft, et cetera, all them are actually Indian. It's Indian minds that are actually powering the rest of the world as it ends up actually going through. Next. And India, indeed, India is actually has a convergence right now, if you actually look at it. We have, we have actually seen a very young populace actually come about, a populist that's very well educated, very fluent when it comes to accessing digital technologies. We have actually, we have actually seen that internet users have increased, the number of bank accounts also for that matter. India was the most underbanked country in the world. Right about now, even the Chinese, the father of the internet in Japan, actually said that Aadhaar is something that actually outstripped Japan and actually left Japan in the dust. No other country in the world can you end up actually transferring money from one bank account to another bank account in seconds. In the U S, the largest economy in the world, it actually ends up taking two to three days. PayPal came up as a business purely because it allowed an accounting entry, debit to one account, credit to one account on an app, has become one of the largest payment, payment providers in the world. India actually leapfrogged all of that by miles. And India's hundred and eight, hundred unicorns have created three hundred forty-four billion dollars of value out of the four hundred fifty billion dollars itself. And they projected to be over two hundred unicorns by the year twenty twenty-six, even though the number is hundred and fifteen as of now, as we go. Next. And indeed, Indians are, like I said, Indians are now actually creating unicorns in India. We're actually creating unicorns across the entire world when you look at it. There are four point two million dollar Indians in the U S. As an immigrant community, we actually have the highest, highest income rate over there, the highest level of education, the least contribution to crime and the highest contribution to Fortune five hundred C E Os across the entire world. If we never fewer than actually remained in India, we'll be a fundamentally different country. Next. And like I said, these are the number of, even if you look at the number of billionaires and everyone for that matter, India is actually slowly pacing up, picking up itself. If you look at the billionaire list just a couple of years ago, the top was actually monopolized by Indian, by, by Indian jars as it comes there also. Next. And the Indian and unicorn landscape as it ends up coming about, this is the sort of split that you end up actually seeing. And Bangalore is obviously the most common name when you see that. You look at e-commerce, you look at fintech, you look at enterprise, you look at, you look at media, you look at anything for that matter. There is no aspect of life that an Indian startup or Indian tech brains hasn't actually touched. Next. On that, India is also third when it comes to the unicorn rankings in the world for that matters. The U S is obviously number one because they were actually the genitors of the entire internet and they have a growth. But the rate of growth of Indian unicorns has actually far outstripped and outpaced every other country that's actually there across the world. Next. And these are some of the unicorns. Some of them are fairly household names. You guys will end up actually knowing them fairly well. Next. If you look at the fastest-growing startup sectors also in the world for the matter, even though edtech is actually coming down as of now, we have seen fintech, enterprise, agriculture, everyone else end up actually picking the stables as he actually go about itself. Next. The Indian B C ecosystem also for that matter has actually increased. The A I F industry in the country has grown at a C H G R of hundred and twelve percent from thirty-first December twenty twelve all the way to thirty-first June twenty twenty-three for that matter. It's a hundred billion dollar enterprise created in the last eleven years, which is managed exclusively by Indian, by Indian managers and Indian G P s such as myself. And indeed, when it actually comes to it, the amount of money we're actually putting in, the amount of net inflows into an A I F has actually outstripped mutual funds over the last three years itself. Next. And even early-stage venture capital also, despite the global headwinds, the funding winter and everything that you end up actually seeing, we have actually seen early, early-stage Indian entrepreneurship and early-stage investors end up actually monopolizing a large amount of deals that end up actually going there. And the rest of the world, as it turns more insular, is actually worrying about what's going to happen, what's going to happen tomorrow. India is the only global bright spot that's actually left. Next. And a large amount of this is not just Indian talent, but also the investment into digital public infrastructure, which I'll also speak about as we go about. This is, India's always been non-aligned. Next. India's always been non-aligned when it actually comes to it. When the Cold War was happening, there was a camp of the U S, there was a camp of the U S S R and in between the both of them, it was India. You look at, you look at the world as of now, China's on one side, the U S is on the other, India's actually in the middle. India is the only country and our prime minister is the only prime minister that both the U S and Russia, sworn enemies of each other, praise to no extent. That is a kind of tightrope walking that we've actually done. And whereas you've seen technology either be monopolized by the government in China or by private, the private sector in the West, India has actually created the digital public goods such as your Aadhaar, your Jandan, your E K Y C, your I M P S, your U P I, everything. All this is actually owned, all this is actually owned by the public sector and is used by the private sector to end up actually, to end up actually growing. Next. Sorry. If you look at the India stack as well, this entire bouquet of technology that Indian minds have actually developed right now that's powering the rest of the world, actually started from Bangalore itself. There were groups such as Ice Pit and others who conceived of this, architected it. Nandan Nilakani was actually the person who created all of this, who's a proud Banglor himself. From Aadhaar in twenty ten, you raise Aadhaar, E K Y C, the government e-marketplace, Digilocker, U P I, O K N, account aggregator and the like. The entire fintech industry in the country was actually grown on the back of these digital backbones that have actually come about, which allowed India now as a three point four five trillion-dollar economy to have eighty-six percent of its G D P actually run through digital transactions. We were a country, we were a country where cash was actually king. Cash is actually now thrash. It's actually the digital payment that ends up actually ruling the rest of the world. And if you look at even the ability, and all this is actually done keeping the consumer in mind. You as an, as a user have to give permission or consent. You as a user have to give permission and consent in order for other people to end up actually using your financial information. That's when I pose that question to you, where will you seek recourse in case your data is actually abused? In India, the recourse actually becomes fairly certain because of these D P I s that have actually come about. Next. Indeed, and this is the account aggregator framework in a nutshell as of now, where in case any financial institution ends up actually requiring either your bank details, investment details or the like, before they end up actually getting into, you actually end up having to give consent for the same, to end up actually giving that. Even though the consent seems trivial, it's like one of those terms and conditions, people just click yes. If you actually take a step back, the ability for you to gatekeep your data and to gatekeep your privacy is actually unheard of in the rest of the world itself. Next. And this entire consented data exchange has actually led, led to the Open Credit Enablement Network, allowing M S M Es and the like to end up actually accessing microloans and credit in a paperless and frictionless manner itself. Next. On the same, and O K N for that matter, these kind of protocols help to actually democratize lending, end up actually linking financial institutions to those who end up needing it and scaling it through. Next. And the O N D C as well, for e-commerce, India spent years tinkering with its e-commerce policies, making minor changes here and there. Where if finally decide to adlige the digital public lends to this entire piece, we actually have O N D C which is actually disaggregated e-commerce and ended up breaking down the wall gardens that are Amazon and Flipkart, et cetera, when they're actually creating. Next. And taking the peak in the O N D C journey, if you look at the way e-commerce happens as of now, there are multiple players, multiple, multiple domains, multiple intermediates, et cetera. Everything is now going to get marshaled through one particular, one particular network itself. Whereas your choice of product through any provider for that matter, you have the access to an entire universe of products as well as to visit a logistics partner you wish to end up actually solving these things. Next. And the development of the Bharat health stack as well. India as a country still fundamentally lacks in physical infrastructure for hospitals and primary healthcare, but digital health and the insurance scheme have actually leapfrogged us and to make sure that every Indian actually has insurance cover when God forbid a medical emergency actually comes about. Next. On that, and these digital platforms, these digital platforms are best actually inhabited by people in business. If during your article ship days and you speak to your, speak to your partners and everyone also, the way they ended up doing accounting, the way they ended up actually advising their clients ten years ago versus now has fundamentally changed because of the rise of these kind of goods. Next. On that, if you look at even the fintech and fintech as well for that matter, we've seen world-class products such as Paytm, Zeroda, Bim, U P I, Jupiter, Dhan, et cetera, all built on these digital public goods. These are Lego blocks that entrepreneurs and smart minds end up actually taking, end up actually building about itself. It begs the question, why aren't there enough C A s who are actually end up doing this or actually contributing to it? As a community, I think we should stop actually looking there to sit there and count money and do the accounts and actually end up becoming enablers of this kind of change in the world is there. The technology tools exist. It just takes enterprise to end up actually going to that. Next. And India is going from a data-poor nation to a data-rich nation and a data-rich nation through the rule of law, which actually empowers the users to weaponize and monetize their data. Next. On that, and tech is actually refactoring the way India actually grows and is fundamentally altering the way we end up actually interacting. Next. On that, and India is a leader on real-time payments, like I said. Eighty-six percent of India's G D P actually went through U P I and digital payment means as we go through. Next. The steady transition, we went from demonetization was actually the incipient point, but we actually, even after demonetization, despite the cash coming in, the economy has actually grown to a much larger extent. And the level of sophistication of the U P I network is something that's actually unheralded. And if you look at YouTube also for that matter, India actually constitutes YouTube's because user base. When Indians started spamming Binoth and every single YouTube comment, the entire world actually sat up and took notice. Next. And Indian banks are actually unlocking financialization. We've gone away from money lenders being the dominant source of finance in year nineteen fifty-one to banks and fintechs becoming predominantly the providers of credit for the rest of the world, thereby bringing down cost of credit, allowing greater access to credit and for people to end up actually investing into their business. And indeed, even, even though the world has tech giants, India has strong technology conglomerates of worlds to come about. The two of them, the biggest one is actually reliance through the entire geo-network that they've actually marshaled up. But the hidden giant that no one ends up actually talking about, next, is actually the Tata Group itself for that matter. Where if you look at manufacturing, you look at hard assets, you look at semiconductors, you look at design, you look at any of these particular institutions, there is a Tata company that actually stands behind it. And the Tata Tech IPO's pop of one eighty percent on listing day is the highest pop in terms of the public market that India has actually ever seen. Next. And the founders, so to speak about some of the more relatable kind of people who end up actually working it. As a venture capital fund as well, the founders we end up working fundamentally rewrite the markets and the way they work. Kukudar F M busted the myth that tier three, tier four India doesn't actually pay. They have close to three million paying customers as of now, which is seventy-five percent of what Netflix will actually do over the, over the last eight years itself. And this is a company that operates purely, purely in local language and local language content, showing the kind of demand that's actually there. Next. Darwin Box also for that matter is actually proved that a large SaaS company can come out in India. India can actually end up paying for SaaS through, through human resource management systems. Lissious has actually proven that India, there is a market for premium protein within the entire country and these are people who might actually paying to end up actually getting access to quality produce. Next. Oh, sorry, yeah. Veera's has actually proven that it is possible. You can pause on any one of them, it's fine. Just choose one. Cool. Thank you. So Veera's has actually proven that it is possible for financial super apps, the likes of, likes of an Alipay, et cetera, to end up actually coming about by actually hitting up niches that are yet untapped by whatever banking revolution India has actually gone through. Next. Companies like Eka Care for that matter are actually pioneering the U P I movement in Indian healthcare through A B A as well as a digital health identity that's actually there. So no matter what Aadhaar did to reduce the friction for identity, these are, these sort of players will end up actually reducing the kind of friction that exists in the healthcare ecosystem thereby democratizing healthcare for all. Next. Check also for that matters actually helping to create credit discipline and credit focus to a, to a consumer-focused credit health platform. Next. Yulu for that matters, fundament, largest E B fleet in the entire country fundamentally altered the way last-minute mobility happens in the country, whose biggest customers now are actually Zomato, Swiggy and the like, who wish to decarbonize their last mile delivery. check also for that matters actually helping to create credit discipline and credit focus to a to a consumer focused credit health platform next you look for that matters fundamental largest E B fleet in the entire country fundamentally alter the way last mile mobility happens in the country whose biggest customers now are actually Zomato Swiggy and the like who wish to decarbonize their last mile delivery chain as well next and any startups for that matter if you look at it when it comes to warehouse automation fast charging agriculture and the like these are unknown Indian names that are far better known outside this country than they are actually within we're still a country the day India starts lionizing its entrepreneurs as opposed to Bollywood or Sanalwo stars will be a fundamentally different country that goes over there as well next first off when it comes to agriculture next I'll have to wrap up also a little quickly on that next inbox we all just spoke about exponent also fast charging next on that and this is the last the last few slides I think that's actually that the average time taken to become a unicorn right now is roughly about seven years for that matter which is a billion dollar enterprise for the same and the average amount of capital that they actually end up raising roughly roughly comes out of about thousand five hundred crores these are companies that end up becoming highly efficient in a kind of capital that they end up raising as they end up actually scaling through next on that and IPOs for that matter number of these companies are actually planning the IPOs right now when they're going to fundamentally alter the stock indices as they end up coming up with that as well next on that we've seen a two point five X market growth within a span of five years for that matter and we will end up seeing far more secular growth as we end up scaling up also next on that and we've actually seen the confidence as an Indian innovator actually increase now entrepreneurship used to actually be something that parents were actually hesitant a child actually pursuing now it's actually the biggest march of pride that anyone actually becomes with that matter I think even within our own fraternity where we're often seen practice everything has become the sort of end goal or industry but entrepreneurship needs to actually become a viable career option I think the rigor that this course actually ends up putting you through thus give you a unique ability to understand the Indian business dynamic navigate the kind of pitfalls other people do and end up creating larger scale value as we see that itself next on that and we've actually raised ambitions across the entire world we've seen entrepreneurship become far easier we've seen companies who've left the country end up actually coming back Phone Pay paid eight thousand crores for the privilege of coming back as an Indian company in India just to be have the privilege of actually listing in India itself and actually in the market and India is the only country in the world where we end up having population scale problems it's no longer just a urban phenomenon or the like but if Silicon Valley could solve for the first billion internet users it's only going to be India that's going to solve for the next seven billion who are coming online if you look at the fastest number of app downloads in the world even Arugya Sethu actually beat Pokemon Go by an entire week also almost for that entire matter showing how much Indians have altered the digital landscape itself next on that and we actually have the kind of robust foundation that exists as of now the digital public goods easy access to internet the level of digital literacy that we end up actually is unparalleled the friction to start an enterprise create a company launch a startup has actually reduced for the longest time you've seen in the world and India is going to take tremendous amount of benefit from this kind of investment into public goods next and these are the kind of reference frameworks that hopefully will enable you to end up actually participating in this transformation so it's not just your books not just your curriculum that's going to end up actually making you successful in life it is important for you to be aware of the role that technology ends up playing be more sensitive about it and figure out how to make technology work for you rather than you end up actually working for technology so with that India's India will become India is actually using this entire flywheel to become a ten trillion dollar economy and with that I would actually like to dawn into this particular conversation thank you very much
that was truly insightful and inspiring thank you C A Siddhathpai sir for sharing your wealth of knowledge and experience with us
we now request C A Pampana sir to present a memento to C A Siddhathpai as a token of our gratitude and appreciation give a huge round of applause for C A Siddhathpai we now request a member of Sikasa Bengaluru John Disouza to deliver the vote of thanks for this session
I extend my heartfelt gratitude to C A Siddhathpai and C A Pampana for gracing us with their valuable presence at this conference and also for enlightening our minds about the role of C A students in finance I do believe that the resonance of their voice will leave us with a lasting impact and also I thank all the students for being a very good and patient audience thank you everyone